All right, I think we've got enough here. I would like to call this meeting. This meeting to order for the zoning board of appeals scheduled for Thursday, November 12th at 7:00 PM. And to move along, I would like to take a look at any agenda changes.
Well, let's do the roll call first.
Okay, all right, I'm sorry.
You should be able to see the agenda on your screen.
Yes.
Okay, so go ahead and let Aaron call the roll, then we'll move on.
Now, full disclosure, if I if I mispronounce anyone's name, please, please let me know. Bont.
Here.
Bauck.
Here.
Muir.
Here.
Zerfaz.
Here.
Ludlow.
Here.
Kubasiak.
Yep, here. Okay. All right, thank you. So let's, now that we have roll call, we can move on to our agenda, item number two on on it, any changes to the agenda that anyone has as it's published? No. Anyone else? If there's no one else, I'm gonna ask.
I make a motion to accept the agenda as such.
This is Bauck, I'll second.
Because we're online, we have to do a vote, right, Cindy?
Yes, every every motion has to be a roll call vote.
Okay, so we let's do a roll call, Aaron.
Bont.
Yes.
Bauck.
Yes.
Muir.
Yes.
Zerfaz.
Yes.
Ludlow.
Yes.
Kubasiak.
Yes. Okay. Third item on the agenda, approval of minutes from the September 3rd, 2020 meeting. I personally have reviewed those minutes and it seems to be everything, it seems to be in order. I don't know if anybody had any other notes or comments or changes.
Nope, I reviewed them and they look good too, Bob.
Okay. Since since we had, it was Bauck, Bont, and Kubasiak, I'll make a motion to to approve those minutes as presented, if I can get a second.
I'll second it.
Okay, thanks, Dick.
Sorry, who was the second?
Dick Bont.
Thank you.
So, Aaron, let's go for vote on the minutes of the September 3rd.
Am I pronouncing that correctly? Is it Kubasiak?
Sure, just put it right on the check.
Bont.
Yes.
Bauck.
Yes.
Muir.
I wasn't present at the meeting, so I'll abstain.
Okay, Zerfaz?
Yes.
And Ludlow?
I'll abstain as well, I wasn't there.
Okay. All right. Now, item number four, new business. Tonight, we do have a application for a height variance for 10 Park Street in a public hearing. And would like to, at this time, ask our zoning administrator if she would go ahead and give us the overview of the application for this variance.
Sure will. Aaron, could you just go switch over to the PowerPoint with page number three? I did make a PowerPoint because I thought we were going to be meeting in person until I got a nudge, so I tried to keep this PowerPoint kind of short, but this is a request for height variances at 10 Park Street. The first variance is a request of a five feet variance above the minimum average roof height of 28 feet, and the second for a variance of eight feet for maximum peak height of 32 feet. In all other respects, the proposed construction applies with the zoning ordinance. In 2014, a very similar request was made to the zoning board of appeals and was approved. I included all of that information in your packet. If you had a chance to review it, that's great. If you didn't, we'll just go over a couple of changes here. Can you slip to the next page? This is a copy of the 2014 request, and it is a height variance request for, I believe that says 35 feet. It's kind of small on my screen, but.
Yes, it says height limit 28 feet requesting 35.
Okay. There have been some changed circumstances to this application since 2014. And the biggest one is the orientation of the parcels have changed. This is the current parcel layout with both parcels fronting on Park Street. But that's the next page, sorry, Aaron, page five. And then the next page is, why am I still doing that? The next page is the previous orientation of the parcels when they were fronting on Campbell Street. The house application, the parcels were reconfigured, but the application of the house is nearly in the same location. So this is aerial photo, next page. Aerial photo from pictometry showing where this is, and this is almost directly across the street from Sogatuck Yacht Club. This is the aerial from GIS, and you can see the two parcels with the new configuration shown in red fronting on Park Street, and the landings on the parcel directly to the south and directly to the north. This is the proposed site plan, and I know it's tiny here, next page. But it should have been a little easier to read in your packet, but you can see that the house meets all the required step back. So the only thing we're talking about is the height. And the next page is the elevations. I hope this is the right one. I have the one with the written in elevation view, and then this is the elevation above sea level, so you can see how it relates to adjoining properties. And then the standards, and you're very familiar with the standards, I'm not going to review all of those, but that's kind of a basic background on this property. Any questions?
The reorientation you said, just in general, without going back too far, was just reorg- the way they reorganized the descriptions of the the two lots, is that the way I'm getting it, Cindy?
The landings were the owners of two properties, first originally described as parcel one and parcel two. Then later on, they reconfigured them, so both parcels fronted on Park Street rather than on Campbell Street. I think it created a more desirable buildable lot for them and protected added more protection from surrounding properties, or if someone bought parcel two. They they could still have control of their backyard. But in general, the location of this house is the same in either configuration.
Good, okay, I can understand that.
But in general, it's in a similar location.
Cindy, this is Jim Bauck. In the initial slide, it said we're being asked to review two variances. Are we doing one or two? And what's the difference between the two, if there are two?
The difference between the two and the request on page there is the zoning ordinance describes two different height maximums. One is the height from the average grade to the average roof height, and the other one specifies what the maximum peak height would be. And that's the other difference between the 2014 application and this application. The 2014 package had a flat roof, and this particular proposed house has a rather complex roof line with different pitches and different, it's not a flat roof, so we have to address both the average roof height and the maximum peak height.
Okay, thank you.
If anyone needs me to zoom in on any of these, just let me know.
One more time. Cindy, one more time on that, the we we have the average peak height, right? Top of the top of the roof?
Peak height to the top of the ridge, the highest part of the roof, that maximum is 32 feet permitted. And the application, I think, was noticed out at 41. We wanted to build in a little bit of cushion because of the
Yeah.
Don't always work out the way that you expect them to once you begin construction, so.
And the average, then the average grade also, right?
Yep, the average grade, and there is a slide with that, I think it's the next one, Aaron? Yeah, that shows the the grade, the grade elevations, and those are described, I maybe in your packet, you can read them more clearly, but they're described as in feet above sea level. And that's the way I prefer to look at them, because it sure makes it easier to figure out what the height is. But at one point, towards the right side of your screen, there's a little low spot there in front of the house. That's elevation of 585, which is just one foot above the the base floodplain.
Yeah, yeah.
So.
Yeah.
And then you can see what the relationship is to the adjoining house. And I don't know if you read all the descriptions of what they considered in the last application that was approved by the zoning board of appeals, that that played big into the decision.
Cindy? John Ludlow, so when I drive by the property, it seems like the property is set below the level of the street.
It is.
Okay, and and that that average grade refers to that level, not the level, not the street level, correct?
Correct, it's the average grade around the perimeter of the structure. And you can measure up to five feet away from that, but it's for that specific grade where the house is going to be, not the street level, not the sidewalk level.
Got it, okay.
The adjacent properties are, but just around the perimeter of that building.
Because it seems pretty that that property dips down pretty significantly below the street level.
It does.
Yeah.
And Cindy, hang on a second, Dick, if you don't mind, I want to make sure Cindy is the it's not quite clear where I see it is, you may have the answer as opposed to, you know, asking Eric, but is the garage mechanical family area, which is a, you know, a living area, do you know the level above, it says 591, right? That's that's what that's at, right?
591 is the first floor level feet above.
Got it, okay, thank you. Go ahead, Dick.
No, I just I'm just reiterating what John saw when I was there too, that park level street. I mean, that house has got to be at least 10 feet, if not more, below Park Street.
It's significant.
Yeah, very significant, Cindy, I saw that, and is there any indication what the city would be concerned about water runoff off Park Street or anything as it goes down to that lower level?
Park Street is going to be redone very shortly, and I believe it will have a valley curb, which would keep the water from running off Park Street onto private property. I think right now it just sheet drains off Park Street.
Yeah, I noticed that, and that was the that was the only question I had of of concern for the property owners, but thank you for that.
Yeah, and they have to retain all their stormwater runoff on their own property, and being in a hill or in a hole, I don't think they'll have any trouble with doing that, so.
Okay.
Okay.
All right, Cindy, thank you, thank you for your summary of the application. So at this time, then I'd like to move along to our presentation by the applicant, and I believe this would be Eric tonight, is that correct?
Yes.
That is, that is correct.
Okay, Eric, if you would, just for the record of, you know, our recording and everything, state your name, address, whatever, and and let us go ahead and give us your information that you would like to share with us on the variance.
Sure. Thank you, my name is Eric Lanning, last name L-A-N-N-I-N-G. My wife Tracy and I are at we reside in Grand Rapids at 703 Madison Avenue, but in Sogatuck, we also own the property at 16 Park Street, the the home there. We, like I said, we now live in Grand Rapids. My wife and I were actually married at the Feld Mansion and have a lifelong affinity for Sogatuck. And we've kind of had a aspiration, a dream of acquiring property there and maybe someday making it our full-time home, so that dream has become a a goal and and now a firm reality, and so here we are today, and our three sons also are with us and are happy to to be looking at the prospect of being in Sogatuck full-time. So the project itself, we've worked hard to to design and orient the home on the property to to really celebrate the the nature of the parcel. And like you, several of you have alluded to, it is very unique. It appears to be very low when you're on Park Street, and especially on Campbell, as you go up the hill. It it looks like, looks like it could be a swamp, right? It is actually not. There is a corner of the property on the northeast corner dips down quite low, and that's that's where the all the water, the runoff on the property tends to go. And that's where there's pooling of water, especially in the springtime and after a heavy rain. But the rest of the the property is, especially as you go west off of Park Street, it does dip down, but then it 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 starts to slope up rather quickly. And by the time you get to all the spot where we planned to put the house, and then continue on from there, it keeps going upward and is really higher than it appears from the street. But there are some some unique aspects to the property that that we have taken into consideration while designing and placing the house. We have, as you can see from the the drawing of that shows the house, we've set it back quite a ways from Park Street. And we plan to keep the buffer zone between Park Street and the home completely natural. That's one of the great things about the the setting is there's a really a great amount of nice hardwood trees, maples and walnuts, and also some evergreens and cottonwoods and what have you. Some great big old trees that we we intend to save absolutely as many of them as we possibly can. We don't plan to have to carve out a yard around the house. We we intend and we hope to have no grass whatsoever. So it really will be kind of nestled back in in the woods. And that is, that is one of the reasons why we've tried to, to some extent, minimize the footprint of the house and go up instead of out so that we can you know, save as as many of those trees as possible. And also, that helps us, obviously, everybody in that area. The million-dollar view is of the channel, right? So by being up two or three stories above ground level, we will have a view of the channel over the yacht club. And be able to see that, so. One other thing of note is that we are going, if you go back to the aerial view, the aerial photo, I should say, you'll see the, if you look very closely, that at 16 Park Street, well, it's not, it's not visible in that in that photo, but 16 Park actually has two driveways. And there is, it showed up in one of the early photos that Cindy showed prior to this.
Yeah, bear with me a second, let me see if I can.
I think that would be, yeah, in the PowerPoint.
Sorry, I'm dealing with many different sized slides here.
Take your time, you're doing great.
There you go, how's that?
I think it's the next one.
There we go, yeah, exactly. So right across Park Street from the tennis court, you see that driveway? It shows up as as pretty white. That that's because it's actually crushed white stone on that driveway. And we use that for parking right now for, we park on it for 16 Park, but we actually intend to use that driveway. We'll grant ourselves an easement and use that driveway and extend it on back to the west and then curb it into our house, so we will not be constructing an additional driveway, we won't be making a new curb cut or anything like that. So again, an effort to maintain as much of the the existing trees and setting as we possibly can.
Eric, excuse me, but has that easement been already issued?
No, it's not. We have not taken any steps towards that yet.
Okay.
But they do own both parcels.
I understand.
I guess the last thing is that we also, one of the, one of the main considerations that we had was making sure that we did not encroach on the view of our neighbors to the west.
That would be page 12.
Is that in the PowerPoint, Cindy, or the packet?
Page 11, I guess.
Sorry. Time out of us today, bear with me. What page did you say, 12?
I think it's page 11.
There we go.
There we go. So you can see on the, yeah, on the left-hand side of that page is shown the house at 540 Campbell, and then the smaller structure.
Sorry. This is just really not working with me right now, sorry, bear with me. There we go.
Good. So the main house is shown, there's a portion of it on the very left-hand side, and then they have like a little barn that's that smaller structure there. So our architect actually visited them and took measurements from where they would be seated on their deck outside their main floor on the house. He measured at that point and then took that measurement down onto our property to where the house will sit and drew the sightline from their seated position at their house over our house, and that's the arrow that you see there. So you can see that it is is well clear of our roof. And they're satisfied as well that it will not be objectionable to them. I have talked with them about it, I've shared all of this information with them, and they have no objections.
Okay.
So that's what I have in terms of presentation, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Okay, we will, what we will do is, we will actually also check and see if there has been any other public comments, but what we will do is we will go into our deliberation, and then we may have some questions, I'm sure we will, Eric, to come back to you with once we get into our discussion.
Okay.
So Cindy, at this time, were there any public comments regarding the application?
I have a communication from 540 Park Street, the house that's shown in the drawing, that they had no objections to this proposal.
Okay, that's the one right to the to the west of them.
The one that's showing up high in this drawing.
Yep, okay. So that's it? Nobody else online or anything that has a comment or against?
Nothing.
Okay. All right, well, then I guess at that point, we we would like to go to our you know, our deliberation in our meeting to discussion for all the board members to see what types of questions we may have regarding the application.
Did you want to close the public hearing?
Yep, sorry, yeah, we'll pub- close the public portion of it, yep, and go to our deliberation, yep. So if anyone out there of board members have some questions for Cindy, Eric?
I'm sorry, all this is Eric. One thing that I neglected to mention that that might go without saying, but the one of the natures of of the setting is that we cannot go down with the structure. We're protruded from having a basement. So where you see the the ground floor, the mechanical and whatever shows on this drawing, that is in effect our basement, which will be on slab on the ground.
Bob, Cindy, this is Dick Bont again.
Uh huh, go ahead, Dick.
Just so I have it clear in the exact thing that they're looking for from what we already gave back in 2014. So we are looking, does it look like, am I, if I'm looking at this correctly, somewhere is between three and five feet more, is that correct, or is it eight feet more that we're proposing to add? Five feet?
Depends which dimension you're looking at. If you're looking at the average, it's five feet. If you're looking at the maximum peak height, it's eight.
It's eight feet, okay, right.
Sections that we're addressing, actually the same section, but two different dimensions.
Right, okay, Cindy, yeah, so there's two things, five feet on the average and eight feet for the maximum peak, okay?
Got it.
Well, to me, it looks, I mean, from what we had given them originally on on this back in 2014 from a, for a variance, I I I see it's very similar, so it's just that it's a little larger, but the thing is, the one that we originally gave him to that, the where that house would have been was much higher than where this is also.
It was it was an average roof height of 35 feet because it was a flat roof, and that's the average.
Okay.
Well, this is a little different configuration, some parts are lower, some are a bit higher.
Yes.
It's basically the same conditions that were there in 2014.
Correct, that's what I'm getting at. It's the same same similar condition, so that's my, just as a comment. Back to you, Bob.
I'm looking at the minutes from the 2014 meeting, and present were Bauck, Kubasiak, Brixie, and Bont.
Okay. Well, let me, let me be sure if I can, can for discussion-wise and on this type of a meeting, let me go around the table, so to speak, and I'll start with, you know, John Ludlow, do you have any questions at this time? Any that you would like to ask the applicant or Cindy, or anything you'd want to bring up to the board members and concerns that you have? Did we lose John?
No, I'm just unmuting him.
Oh, all right, thank you. I'm curious, maybe Eric can tell me, Eric, what are the ceiling heights in your, it looks like there's there's three levels, correct?
Yes, that is correct.
And the ceiling heights inside are what?
Oh, good question. Basement or the the ground level is nine feet, I believe. And I believe the on the main level, which is the second level, I on the main level, which is the second level, as you look at the, the elevation drawings. I believe it's also nine feet, but then there's a cathedral portion. You can see the, the high sloping roof there. So, at that point, the ceiling would be higher.
A little bit higher, okay.
Yeah. And then on the third floor, I believe, I believe they're nine feet as well.
Got it. Thank you.
Yeah, I think the third floor would be the, would be the increase of your cathedral there quite a bit according to one scale. Okay. Anything else, John?
Um, I don't, so, you know, it's kind of, it's, it's really a unique piece of property. You, you really have to drive by it to get the, a feeling of the extent of that piece of property and, and how big it is and how much it dips down from the road. But I, ju- just looking at the layout here and reading Cindy's PowerPoint, it gives you one perspective, but driving by it and really experiencing the piece of property, it changes things completely in my mind. So, yeah, just a comment.
Yeah, you have to understand the property pretty well.
Absolutely.
To appreciate the, the drawing and, and the layout and the way it fits. So.
Yeah.
Okay. Well, let me move on to Jim Muir. Do you have any, Jim, do you have any concerns?
Uh, no concerns. I'd just like to compliment Eric and his architect. I think they've done a real thorough job of maintaining the, the flavor of the property. Like John said, I drove over there too and it's, it's very unique, but the fact that you're going to keep it so natural and blend in with, with the natural area there, I think is really important for By the River. So, yeah, I, I would be in favor of supporting this because I, I think you put a lot of effort and time into it and a great presentation too. Thanks, Eric.
Yeah, thank you.
I think we might all agree on that. So, good comments, Jim. Jim Bauck, how about you?
I, I have no questions. I would, I would, Eric, excuse me, I would mimic Jim Muir's comments. Thank you.
Okay. Zach?
Yeah, I, just one question, just based out of curiosity. On the proposed site plan, there was a structure that said future. Is that just a future building, like an outbuilding or something?
That's my wife's, she said. Yeah, so that is a, that is a hopeful future little outbuilding.
That was all I had. I, I echo the comments of some of the others where, yeah, I think it's a, it looks like a beautiful home.
Thank you.
Okay. Well, I think everybody's had some pretty good, first of all, the, these few questions is, is always a good sign. Secondly, that, you know, the compliments is, is also a good sign for some of the things that we go through. They've done their homework. They've been through this a few times. The, I guess it, you know, I understand the easement that it's really not part of our jurisdiction or questioned. And, you know, even if the easement somehow never worked out somehow between you, that's not our problem. You guys can figure out how to get into your driveway without it. So, that's, that's really enough, nothing we deal with. I believe that, you know, based on the history of the, the property and the amount of of effort that's gone into understanding, designing and developing this into something that's not only workable, but aesthetically functional in a very difficult situation. We've all been around this property for a long time. And aside from it becoming a parking lot of the yacht club at one time, it's nice to see it turning into, hopefully turning into some type of a residential because that was a plan of the yacht club at one time. So, I guess what I'd like to do is, I'm not sure if anyone has any other comments or, or concerns at this time. I would like for us as our board to do our, our due diligence and go through the standards and make sure that, you know, we, we have done so and we comment and, and have, have each, each individual a chance to have any more comments before we do a final vote. But I would like to go through those, those standards unless somebody has something prior to that.
Aaron, those standards are on page 12 of the PowerPoint.
I didn't think they were that far in. I thought they were closer than that, but I haven't. I had them on page three of one of them.
Oh, page two.
Oh, the PowerPoint, oh, of your packet on page three of the packet. So, sorry, yes, you're right. You know what? As a, as a little experience, I'm gonna, I'm gonna, Jim Muir, I'm gonna put you on the spot here. I'm gonna ask you if you would like to read our first standard under section 154.155.
Sure, no problem.
Okay, and if you would like to read it and then we can all have our comments and our understanding is we, as you know, as a board, we have to go through and make sure that in order to approve any kind of a variance that both these, both these requests are met according to all four standards. If it doesn't meet one of the standards and it doesn't, it doesn't really pass by vote. So, first we discuss them and we make sure we understand them. And then we come back, you know, and vote on them. So, what we're gonna do right now, we're just gonna read them and discuss them and see if anybody has any more questions. So, if you'd like to start, Jim, I appreciate it.
Sure. The first standard states that strict compliance with area setbacks, frontage, height, bulk or density would unreasonably prevent the owner from using the property for a permitted purpose or would render conformity unnecessarily burdensome.
Do you have any opinion of how, how this application request would you would, you would see how that does meet or not meet the standard?
In my estimation, looking at, at the material that Cindy provided as well as going over and looking at the property, I don't, I think it meets that standard personally.
Okay. Do any of the other board members have any, let's say, agreements or negatives or any discussions on Jim's opinion?
Um, Bob, this is Dick Bond. I, if he just built a conventional house, you know, like a ranch house, he wouldn't even be able to see over Park Street. So, not, not to, not to make this that clear, but I think, and I know, I know Chuck Postma, organization out of Grand Rapids, I know them well as an architect. And I think he's done a fine job in designing what the, he has presented to his client and what they are presenting to us as a very favorable situation. So, I would think that we should, I'm just a number one. I mean, I would feel that we should do justice in giving it to them.
Okay. Well, since you're already talking, Dick, how about if you read number two?
That a variance would do substantial justice to the owner as well to other property owners in the district or whether a lesser relaxation would give substantial relief and be more consistent with justice to others. Just giving him that, that variance would, would definitely give him the reasonability to have a beautiful house in a situation where it's located. So, and if it was lesser, it would not, it would not be suitable to be a place where I would want to, to, to live in.
Well, I think, I think it should be noted too that, this is Jim Muir. I spent a little time on the planning commission and believe me, there are many property owners that would not take the time to address their neighbors when they brought proposals to us at the planning commission. I think Eric has gone out of his way as, as his architect to make sure that their design did not interfere with any of the property owners in proximity to their property. So, I, I commend him for that too.
I think we'd all agree on that, Jim, that it is, it is, it is a situation where there's been a lot of thought and a lot of understanding to the surrounding areas to that. So, to do justice with others. So, that's, that's very, very true. All right. Let's move on to number three. Zach, can you like to do number three?
Absolutely. That the plight of the owner is due to unique circumstances of the property and not general neighborhood conditions. Well, definitely, I think that natural grade of the property is definitely unique. I mean, looking back at some of the notes from the previous meeting that you guys had, the natural grade sits below the street level. It makes it a little bit unique in my mind. So, that would be, I think it does meet that standard as well.
Sure.
It can go down in those circumstances. That's been stated.
Yeah, yeah, it's in, in that neighborhood, there are about every, about every lot, it almost has a little different condition. Almost, at least, you know, around them, they're all a little different in the neighborhood. They're not all conformity. So, I believe you, I would agree with this one, that it would meet that standard. Any other comments on number three? Okay. Number four, John Ludlow. How about if you attack that one?
That the problem is not self-created based on personal financial circumstances. Well, again, you know, it, it goes back to number three and potentially number two and number one. It's really a neat piece of property. As Eric sort of stated, it's, it's a, it's a neat, neat piece of property because of the, the hardwoods and but it's, it's somewhat unique in that it's set down a little bit. It's, it's got, a lot of the homes around it are fairly large. I think that if you take, if you look at the design of the home and you look at the, the piece of property with, with your own eyes, it, it sets it apart from, from what we do on paper here. So, I don't think it's self-created. I think it meets the standard as well. I think it's a very unique piece of property. I think this house is gonna fit well into this piece of property. It's gonna fit well into the neighborhood and I think it's gonna be a, a plus for the neighborhood unequivocally.
Okay. I don't, I don't think there's any, I don't, I don't believe there's anybody that would deny what you just said as far as, far as all those issues. So, anyone, any at all, though, if you do have a comment, we'll, we'll ask it now for number four. Okay. So, basically, in our review, we, we have found in, in general that there haven't been any really negative comments, feeling that most of the understanding is that all four standards appear to be met based on the findings and our review. At this time, I would say if there's, unless someone has some other comments they'd like to make, I would ask a board member for a motion, remembering that we do have two, two different variances or two different reliefs that we're looking for. The five foot on the average grade and the eight foot on max on the height.
Bob, I would make a, this is Dick Bond, I would make a motion to approve the application of V200004 for the variance of the property on 10 Park Street for the five feet on the maximum average and for the eight feet for the maximum peak height. I think they, he said was either 40 or 41, whatever that was on that. So, that would be my motion on that.
Okay. Before I ask for a second, Cindy, would that be, would that be somewhat within the right proper wording that you feel for the first of the motion?
I believe I have enough to create the motion and findings of fact.
Okay. And I'll ask the question, would we, let's see, we're, we really are only concerned with, with that, with that average and that overall. We're not really referencing any of the heights that's given above, above sea level in the drawing, right, Cindy?
Right. That this, this motion meets the drawings that are provided by the applicant.
So, so we would do want to state that it is a 41-foot max. Is that correct?
That's correct.
So, so we do want to make sure that's part of the motion, that there is a 41-foot max on the overall height. And that is what the eight foot is supposed to provide.
Correct. I think I mentioned that in my motion.
Yep, yep, yep. Okay. All right. If nothing else, then let's move along and ask for a second for a motion from a board member.
I will second.
Zach? That's Zach, right?
Correct.
Yep. Okay. Our last chance, if anybody has any questions before I ask for a vote. Okay, Aaron, I would guess at this point in time, we would like to ask for a vote based on the motions made, first and seconded as a proposed that the standards are met and this request. And if you would proceed, that'd be fine.
And so, could someone please tell me who the first was?
First was Dick, Dick Bond.
Oh, thank you. Uh, Bond.
Yes.
Zerfas?
Yes.
Bauck?
Yes.
Muir?
Yes.
Ludlow?
Yes.
Kubazyatch? Am I getting closer?
Yeah, you're better off first time.
Kubazyatch it is.
Yes. So, actually, actually, Aaron, we say kabashik. So, anyway.
Kabasha? Is that right?
Yep.
Okay.
Kabasha with a K on the end. Yep.
Kabasha, gotta try.
That's all right. Thank you. All right. So, so at this, with that vote in place, we have found that the application does meet the standards as reviewed and the information that was presented in front of us. And I think that as the chairman here, Eric, I know it's been said a few times and, you know, we, we like the planning commission go through this many, many, many times and people don't really go through the time and effort to understand our, our rules, understand why you ask for a variance and when it's appropriate, but provide us with the appropriate information to make a decision that is, you know, worthy of accepting or not accepting. And you've done a nice job. So.
Well, thank you very much. I certainly didn't want to waste your time and wanted to do it right. So, thank you.
Yeah, thank you. So, all right, guys, let's go back to our agenda. So, at this point in time, we have dealt with the new business with the, the variance on 10 Park Street.
Bob, don't you have to close our?
I did that earlier. I closed the public portion. Yeah.
Okay.
So, we'll go on to number five. Is any unfinished business tonight with anybody? There's nothing on the agenda.
Nothing.
Then number six is communications. Nothing on that. And our responsibility is ask the public if there's any public comments. And I don't know if there's any other public that has came. our responsibility is ask the public if there's any public comments and I don't know if there's any other public that has came in since we started this meeting. Aaron or Cindy, you'd have to tell us that probably.
Not that I see.
Okay, so no public comments on item seven. Any ZBA board member comments or zoning administrator comments?
I have no additional comments. Does your board have any comments?
Board members, any comments? So I think you guys did a nice job. I'll make that comment. Thanks for everybody going out looking at the property. It's very important in this one to understand how this property lays out. Well, guys, thanks for tuning in, I guess, as we say. Until next time, I appreciate it. I can't think of anything else unless there's any more comments from anybody.
No, I can make a motion to adjourn the meeting.
I'll second, Jim Bauck.
Then we need to vote.
Bant?
Yes.
Bauck?
Yes.
Muir?
Yes.
Zerfas?
Yes.
Ludlow?
Yes.
Kubashak?
Uh, yes, since the sandbars closed, I guess I'll say yes. All right, thanks everybody. Enjoy your evening.
Good night.
Good night, you.
Thank you, thanks Cindy.
Thank you guys.
Thank you guys.